All right. I was hoping for a little feedback, but I'm not going in, so hopefully.
Ready?
Yes, that's what I was hoping to hear.
All right, we're ready, all right. I'll start again. Please indulge us and bear witness. I've called the order to the Town of Munster meeting. This is the Town Council regular meeting for November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And with that, I will ask the clerk treasurer to call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Here.
Councillor Hopper.
Here.
Councillor Gardner.
Present.
Councillor Peterson.
Here.
Councillor Nellens.
Present. With that, I'd like to ask you to please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a copy of the proclamation?
What? I happen to have one right here.
Wonderful.
I can share that with you.
The next item here is a proclamation for the two thousand and twenty-four Small Business Saturday. And I've asked Councillor Hopper to please read it.
Proclamation of the Munster Town Council, a proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday. Whereas Munster, Indiana is divided by the unique character and diversity of its businesses. And whereas local businesses contribute to the economic vitality of our community, creating jobs and fostering entrepreneurship. And whereas the distinctive products and services offered by local Munster businesses enhance the culture of our community, providing our residents with a wide array of choices and experiences. And whereas Munster recognizes the importance of sustaining our local economy and preserving the unique character of our community. And whereas the Munster Chamber of Commerce is presenting the Holiday Shop Small Crawl on Saturday, December seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, in support of small businesses. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of Munster hereby encourages all residents and visitors to actively shop local. And proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of Munster expresses its sincere gratitude to all local businesses for their dedication, hard work, resilience, and contributions to the vibrancy and character of our community. And calls upon community organizations, local leaders, and residents to collaborate in fostering an environment that champions and sustains local businesses.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to proclaim or honor this proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday.
I'll second. Any further comments, questions? I think it's a very good idea to support our businesses, the small businesses especially.
We call it rolls.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to the public hearing for additional appropriations.
At the last meeting, the council had first reading on the ordinance for additional appropriations. This is the scheduled public hearing for it. Later in the meeting, you'll be asked to have your second read on the ordinance and adopt the ordinance to authorize additional appropriation.
So with that, I will open up the open to the public hearing for additional appropriations. Anyone who'd like to come forward and speak on that, please do so. This will be followed by a regular open to the public hearing.
Hi, I'm Bob Thomas.
Yes.
I live at eight four four five Manor Avenue. And I just put on the record the conversation I had with Mr. Nellens beforehand with regard to the budget and the parking. Well, we're called Parking meters now, Centennial Park, that we could find out more detail on what actually happens. I know you suggested I could email them to find out, but I just want to get on the record, we need to know what that is.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward and speak on the additional appropriations? Staying up when I close that open to the public, and that will then be set up for a vote later on in the meeting. At this time, I've asked.
Dave, I want to make a motion to approve the introduced ordinance nineteen sixty. No?
No.
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 It's a different public hearing for that.
Wow.
I think what President Nellens is queuing me to say is that we have John Miles on Zoom. He is the representative for One Eye Jacks. He affirmed that there was an item later in the meeting about. And President Nellens asked that he give a brief explanation of his company, what it is that he can offer the town. Oh, I will unmute him.
I'd be happy to help. You need me to do something.
Do we have anyone from the AV club? I don't know. They could help with this. John, you may have to unmute yourself. Can you?
Did that do it?
That's good, we can hear you.
Yay. Council members, thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I'm Executive Director for One Eye Jacks. We have over thirty-five minutes in public and media communications. First of all, let me say Town of Munster has a great story to tell. Lots of stories to tell, just within five minutes, the small business to shop local. Is a great, you know, is a great community message to make sure it's out there and people know about it. And we have a philosophy, I've been doing this for a long time, is the the things that I like to empower are the things that are cost efficient. Like the radio program you have, like the social media do, like your website, website streaming events that you have. And also press releases, and there are aspects of the press releases, I don't know if we want to discuss now, that are very powerful, and I, there's been, I think, some miscommunication on that. What that is, is that is a database, when I write a press release, they distribute it for me. And it's a database out of New York, and I can define the database. I can do it in just one county. I can do it in surrounding counties. I can do it in, you know, by parts of states, full states. If you had, for instance, a large company come in, and it was a wonderful thing that happened. We can even do a national press release if that would be something that would be in your best interest. Everything that we do is in the council's best interest and the Town of Munster's best interest. We, I want to speak on, we are, we are a teaming group. What we're doing is, yes, we know what we're doing, but we need to work with people inside Munster. I spoke with Tricia about this. It's, we also bring some very unique side amenities that you guys have found very valuable. Like we were going to film and edit the Christmas program with no additional cost outside of our agreement. We, we believe in putting, the most powerful medium in the world, folks, is sight and sound. We believe in filming as much video as possible, in putting as much visual. And not just, well, for instance, when I examined what you guys were doing, and you guys, this is kind of what this is about. I noticed that a lot of things that were being posted were just templates. We don't do that. We do actually things that are views of Munster. There's a lot of things going on. The police would have a voice, like, the fire would have voice, like, remember to be careful with, with space heaters. I mean, there's, we could go to a million different topics. And the mediums that you have available to you can be managed. And actually, people can learn while we're doing this, so that it's not about us doing this forever. There'll be things that you can probably take over for yourself in the future. I want, we're very, we like good things, but if crisis management's happened, we have a lot of experience in that. I've done work for City of Indianapolis, Chicago area, Fort Wayne, City of Chicago. In fact, I think I was recommended by someone that worked with me at City of Chicago, political campaigns, urban redevelopment. The a lot of, of, of public service attorneys, a lot of attorneys have used us. And we're kind of a, I don't want anybody to get wrong in this, we're not behind the scenes, but we do the things to get the message out. And if there's one thing that's important within your, your community, is I think we can do a lot of positive, make a lot of positive steps and throw a lot of levers that just allow people to have information or conduits to where they can find information. As you know, as council people, I don't have to tell you this, but sometimes the smallest thing can get blown out of proportion. And if you have a way for people to find the information, what you're trying to communicate, it really helps with that. We handled, I handled Indy Parks and Greenways in Indianapolis for a mayor there. The, even though that was a good thing, there were a lot of people that would say, I don't want that trail going through my backyard. Well, you know, it ended up being a tremendous amenity and increased their property value. But one way we handled that, which is something I wanted to talk to you about, is having a conduit possibly on your website where people can put in questions that they have, and that the city responds to it in a set timetable. Five days, ten days, twenty-four hours, forty hours, whatever it is, doesn't matter. It's just so that it's professionally responded to, so that citizen knows that they had a question. Some of them are, let's be serious, some of them are not going to be serious questions. But serious questions are responded to in a understood timely basis. So we bring tools to what we're trying to help the community with. We're very serious about what we do. We've been doing it a long time. It's professional level communications. Somebody have a question?
Yeah, thank you. I think that's, I think you've given us what we needed to hear.
Okay. Well, thank you for allowing me to speak, and like I said, I, I've made several trips now to Town of Munster, and I really hope we can work together. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. You're welcome. You're welcome. Should I stay on? Leave? What's the protocol here?
You can leave.
Okay, well, thank you, folks, and I hope I have a chance to meet you sometime other than Zoom, because that's the worst way to communicate. But thank you very much. We're done?
Yeah, we're done.
Okay, thank you.
David Onspire.
Yeah.
T F cell.
There. Always that switching that important challenge.
Nice job.
All right. Tricia, thank you very much for making that arrangement. All right, we are at the open to the public session, and all public comments are limited to two minutes, with a total of twenty minutes allotted for the public comment section. All speakers must sign in on the public speaker sign-in form prior to speaking, which would be at the time that you come up. Please keep all comments civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. At their discretion, council may allow public comment to extend beyond twenty minutes, but it is not required to do so. All rules for public comment are posted outside the main meeting room. So with that, I will open the public session. Those who would like to come forward and speak, please do so. And be sure and put your name and badge there. Okay.
Hi, I'm Bob Thomas, eight four four five Manor Avenue. I'm here representing now the Manor Avenue Safety Group. Because of our concerns, still, there's no fence preventing trespassers from getting onto the train tracks. There was a document that Chris Pitts forwarded, Wendy who forwarded it to everyone, that states that the easiest, the best way to prevent people from getting on the tracks is the pedal of offense. So we're asking the City of Munster to consider helping us make that happen, whether it's by the train and ICTD doing it, or funds available to have it put together. In addition, I sent another article, which Wendy forwarded, with respect to the noise study that was done in two thousand and sixteen. Ran at the EPA standards, come back from the eighties. But the study was a projection, a, I'm sorry, projected version. It was a simulation, in other words. And so there is no proof of what's really going to happen in the sound. So my thought is, the sound could actually be more than predicted. And in addition, a sound barrier would take the place of a safety fence. So I wanted to give the council two options to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Thomas, I just, that noise study that you forwarded to us, that's the noise study that we forwarded to you originally, correct?
It didn't include all dependencies, so I went and got the appendix that was online.
Okay, that is, that is this noise study from Nick.
Yeah, that is the noise study from Nick.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want clarification. I saw it, I just wanted to make sure I knew what it was.
My background is in engineering, so I went and did an engineer analysis, and I see that if I did a simulation and said that would be good enough for an engineering project, I could break through the calls. So I'm considering that perhaps. They should do some studies and actually have some come out, put out a ninety dB sound, and see what really happens after the echoes come up and down.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thanks for your clarification.
Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward in the open to the public session? This is the opportunity to speak on things that are on the agenda. Nothing. All right, with that, then I will close the open to the public session. Thank you very much. And that takes us up to the consent agenda. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments, questions?
Mr. President, I'm going to object in treatment of Wesley Bennett, voucher on the consent agenda, ask it to accept consideration.
Right. Any other questions, comments? Same none, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
And then I'd like to make a motion to pay the Wesley Bennett bill on the consent agenda.
I'd second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments? Questions?
And for clarification, that's the accounts payable voucher registered twenty-four dash eleven G.
I just don't get why we do this each time. I really don't.
I'll explain. In May this year, we identified as a serious concern zoning work. And we, and I'm going to read this specifically. We approved the payments of approximately fifty-one thousand dollars to an outside engineering firm. And I'm going to read from the memo that was in the agenda on May twentieth. The town is conducting a deep review and update of the town code. This work is being performed by Town Attorney Nicole Bennett and Planning Director Sergio Mendoza. The timeline calls for having this work completed and adopted by council this summer. To meet this aggressive schedule, staff has requested assistance from Pan Am, Wagland, Client Engineering, HWC. That work is supposed to be done end of August. It is not done. It's still not done. And as an attorney myself, I recognize that you have a responsibility to complete the work you do a contract with. We spent fifty-one thousand dollars outside engineering firm to get this work done. It's still not done. And to the extent that Weston and Bennett is submitting invoices for work, other work, when they haven't completed urgent work that was supposed to be done and passed by the end of the summer, I'm objecting. And I'm hoping that the council will take this seriously and refocus on getting this work done, that we paid an additional fifty-one thousand dollars. That is the reason that I've been objecting.
Do you understand that Ms. Westlin's father is in hospice care, and she has to drive all the way to Lansing, Michigan? And you couldn't even show up for an agenda review this past Wednesday, and we know why. I mean, can't you take a heart and sympathy for her? You didn't show up for an agenda review because of your mother-in-law, but it's okay. It's not okay for her to drive up to her ailing father.
George, I don't understand why you're getting angry. I'm not, I'm not the enemy, and I'm not the bad guy. This firm has three attorneys. Getting work done when we are spending extraordinary amounts of money is, there's enough, there are other attorneys in that firm.
I'm in no hurry for this. You are.
Well.
Us as a council aren't. When it gets done, it gets done.
Okay, well, as I pointed out, we spent an additional fifty-one thousand dollars of town funds in order to get this work done and completed and passed by the end of the summer. It's still not done. And as an attorney myself, I know that you have a responsibility for completing the work you are contracted and promised to complete. That's not done, and that's the reason why I'm objecting.
Might I ask if there have been any other questions on the bill, anything else that fell outside the normal parameters?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to point. I just wanted to point out that on September thirteenth, a comprehensive draft was sent to the town. And we're two months later, and we have not heard a response from anyone, including Mr. Peterson.
I want to respond to that. The so-called comprehensive draft was incomplete work product that was nowhere near being put before the council for adoption. And council, I know, I know is aware of that.
I, I.
We talked about this being done and adopted by the end of summer.
I do, I do think it's fair to point out that the last time we reviewed our zoning ordinance, it was a year and a half to two years, and we had public input, and I believe it was about a hundred and seventy-five thousand, maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of fees that were done to change the code. And we asked in February or March to have this code redone, that took a year and a half to two years the last time, be done in three months. I think it was a pretty much unen, a task that could not be accomplished in that short a time. And I think we were just hoping that it could be done, because we just thought that we could have an attorney and a planning director change a code that the last time we changed a code took eighteen to twenty-four months.
Again.
I call the question. I would just respond that, yes, it was an incomplete draft, and with that, graph was an email saying that we can't go any farther until we get a response. So you put us in a trick bag, right? Not you, but we're in a trick bag when we need a response. We don't get a response, and then sixty days later, we're delinquent.
Okay.
And I call the question.
Did I respond to that or not?
How about we do this off? I'd like to move the meeting along, because I understand, and I know, let's, let's have a conversation offline. Thank you.
Then I will second. Call a question. Since there was a motion on the table.
All right. Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
We're voting.
On the call to question, correct?
Yes.
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 And then Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
So all five of you are voting on that, and then the next one will be on our
Wesley Bennett.
Wesley Bennett, the vouchers on.
Twenty-four eleven G.
Eleven G. And that will be Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
No.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
That's a four one.
All right, that finished that section, that takes us up to old business. And under old business, we have ordinance nineteen sixty-eight, additional appropriations. This is the second reading. We have the public hearing. And this, Abbott, anything else to say about it?
No. Plus, council had other questions about it.
No, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number nineteen sixty-eight.
We have our motion. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Councillor Hopper, any further questions, comments? Same none, please call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. All right, that takes us up to new business. And under new business, we have Resolution twenty-one thirty, the future of Centennial Park Clubhouse.
In April of this year, council had a joint meeting with the park board to discuss the future of the clubhouse. At the time, the Pro Shop and the new golf storage facility were being built. And then we discussed about what should happen next with the clubhouse. And there was a sort of consensus forum that the best route would be to take it down and then figure out what the next step would be. At that time, the park board passed a resolution saying that that was what they wanted to do. And now council being asked to pass a resolution that mirrors, it's basically the same thing that the park board adopted.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty-one thirty, which confirms park board Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash oh two.
I'll second. We have a motion. We have a second. Further questions, comments? Same none, please call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
You know, it's a hard thing for me to say yes, because I was involved with that building being built. Some family activities took place there, but it's best that it be taken down. So yes, my vote. All right. Yes.
You're allowed to vote with regret.
All right, that takes us up to item B, which is ordinance nineteen seventy-two, which is the two thousand and twenty-five salary ordinance.
So there are certain items that council is statutorily required to pass before the end of the year. Includes setting elected official salary, the certified first-class patrolman rate. All those things are included here. We also are head foot a three percent increase for all the police fights. We also are head foot a three percent increase for all the police fight, police officers. Everything on that matrix that was put together at the beginning of the year. Three percent increase for all the elected officials as well, and all the firefighters. Earlier this year, council had a engaged ODS for a salary study. We got the results back from that, and the the, the two things that sort of came out of that is, as a general rule, all of our non-sworn officers are, are non-sworn personnel are paid well. We're in within the market. There are some that are not quite where they should be. They also suggested that we move away from the step and grade system that we've been on that's quite rigid to something that's more a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum. We have gone through, they went through, and then staff has gone through as well and reviewed all the employees to see where they are. And as I said, there are a few employees that need to be, there needs to be some adjustments made for them. Overall, every employee is going to get at least three percent increase. There will be a, I think there's two or three that will get a little bit more than that in order to bring them in line with, with the rest of the with the market and with the rest of the organization. They also came back with their benefit study. That showed that we, their phrase they used, we offer a robust benefit package. They made some recommendations that were primarily things that did not have a cost associated with them. They were more along the lines of seeing our employees, do they know enough about the benefits? Are they aware of the benefits? Are they being used? Surveys to see what employees might want, that kind of thing, which we can address in the first quarter of next year. The salary ordinance also includes the new employees that staff asked for during the budget season. So council is going to be asked to have first reading tonight, second reading, I think December second.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to consider ordinance nineteen seventy-two on first reading and schedule second reading for our next regular meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further questions on first reading?
The only thing I would encourage, kind of looks like the clerk shop is kind of taking over the HR department part of this whole thing, is I do think since we're implementing a new paid plan, really make our department heads understand what that paid plan is and how it works. Because I think the more education we can give our senior-level staff, I think it helps implement everything else within the town. And I guess there's always concern when you change paid plans around. But I think we can't spend enough on education and training of how this new plan works to really make it most beneficial for everybody that's involved here.
Agreed. And, and we had a, there was a department head meeting after the agenda review to go through, explain, get the basics across. There's also going to be a sit-down with each department head to explain where their employees fit in. One of the, one of the downsides to the seven-grade system that we had was department heads didn't have any choice in what their staff was earning. And so that sort of made it that they, that there wasn't a, a, they had a different motivation for understanding the system. Now there's a little bit more say where someone can come forward and say, you know what, I've got an employee here who's really knocking it out of the park. A, a, and so there can be more of that conversation, and again, the better understanding.
I applaud the changes, and I also encourage continuous work on this because it always adds with any of this stuff. It does take some time to implement, and I appreciate the efforts you guys are putting forth on this.
All right, thank you, Counselor Gardner. Any other questions, comments? Ding, none. Please call the roll for the first reading.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to item C, compensation policy for non-sworn personnel.
So this is also part of the salary study that was done. This is a policy document that explains what this new system will be, defines the terms, talks about how these things will be implemented. And so we're asking council to to adopt the policy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the compensation. Salary structure policy for non-sworn personnel dated November eighteen, twenty twenty-four is presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further questions, comments? Now, this is just the one read.
Yes.
Ding, none. Please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Gard- uh, Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to item D, the CCMG twenty-two-three dash two, release of retainage.
This is for work that was done on Terrace, Forest, River, and Cray. There was a change order for it. Two meetings ago, S E H has now reviewed the work, and they're recommending release of the final retainage amount.
Any questions, comments?
Let me make a motion to approve the final release of retainage for Terrace, Forest, River, and Cray, which are the CCMG twenty-two-three dash two projects in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and seventeen cents.
I'll second.
The motion. We have a second. Any questions, comments? Ding, none. Please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. Takes us up to item E, which is amendment number two to the CCMG twenty-two-four dash two engineering agreement.
After this project began, when the design engineering started, staff wanted to have a full curb and gutter removal and replacement along the streets. They also wanted to do the sewer separation along the one area and water main work. This means there's more engineering that has to be done, and so S E H has presented this change order for that, but complete that one.
Counselor President, I'd like to make a motion to approve one-hundred-thousand-five-hundred for an additional street water main design separation of combined sewers and resident projects. Representative services for a total additional cost of one-hundred-thousand-five-hundred dollars, bringing the contract total to two-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-hundred dollars. We have.
I'll second that motion.
Any questions, comments?
Just a point of clarification. These projects that are twenty-two-four dash two, when do these projects get bid out, and when do they take place?
The, that, those projects, these are the ones that we will be submitting. Let me read them. These will be submitted in the next call that happens in December.
Okay.
Then they'll be bid out at the beginning of twenty-twenty-five for the work to happen next summer.
Any other questions, comments? Ding, none. Please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. It takes us up to item F, purchase the radios for Public Works.
So the radios that Public Works has are well over twenty years old. They have dead spots in throughout town, and they would like to get new ones. They, the ones that they are looking to purchase, we put them on the same frequency that Police Fire and Lake County are on. They got two quotes, because those are, there's only two that provided in our area. They are asking to go with Tri Electronics, which is a higher cost, but they have the radios right there. They can get them installed before the winter comes, whereas if they go with the other vendor, they would have to wait several months.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of fifty-three new Motorola A P X twenty-five-hundred radios from Tri Electronics for a total price of two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars.
A second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Questions, comments? Now, my understanding is these are for the vehicles and personal carrying, just for the vehicles.
Is there a necessity to have Park's department also on the same frequency? Are they going to have to upgrade there, or would it be wise to have them upgrade theirs?
I do not know the answer to what state, how old their radios are.
Right.
That's the question that.
I would just ask them. Mark, yeah. Okay.
All right, any other questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yep.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to item G, which is engagement letter, community outreach.
So Mr. Miles gave a brief presentation at the beginning of the meeting. This was in response to the overall concerns that we hear regularly from staff, council, our residents regarding communication. And having good outreach, letting our residents know what's going on, being able to answer questions timely, that type of thing. I know there's been much discussion about this, so I will I'll leave it at that.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we table this item on the agenda and for further discussion and research, and research and potentially an RFP that would go out, but I, I should stop it. I just make a motion to table this item on the agenda.
And I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments?
The reason why I'd like to table this is mainly, I, I think overall it's a very good thing. I think it's something that we need to do, and I think our town is in the very dark ages of information, you know, explanation in what we're doing. I do think we need to take a, a very good look at what we're looking to do. I was a little concerned with the agreement with, with kind of bare minimum discussions about website consulting and also the the, the branding type items that I think we might need be looking at first. But again, I also think we need to really sit down with an RFP so we have a real good idea of what we're gonna look at and what, how we're going to move forward, because I think and I, and I do, I do think we need to look at an outside agency to do this, but I think the worst thing that we can do is just have an outside agency come in here and just do whatever they want to do. I think we have to have some sort of a plan first of what we want them to be doing, so. Again, I would not ask that we table this for very long. And I think if we need to put together an RFP, if we can get that done in the next couple of weeks or three weeks, so we can get out on the streets, I think it would be good. Now, I, I know I'm looking at a, a very short-staffed senior administration group here in town, but hopefully we can kind of gather some things together and again, if, if we need to, if you need some additional assistance, I'd be happy to throw my two cents worth, but sometimes that, it's more confusing than what it's worth.
Chuck, won't you explain what RFP?
Request for proposals, I'm sorry. That doesn't help Tricia.
No, I know exactly. To be very honest right now, if, if you're talking in the next two to three weeks, I simply will not be able to do that. If you want to task it to someone else, that's fine. I simply am not going to be able to address it anytime before February, because right here and, and my controller responsibilities are going to hit one of the highest points they hit all year.
If, if it's okay with the council, I would mind ask, I think I can maybe sit down with Tricia in a short period of time and, and see if we can put something basic together.
Definitely.
That for the council to review.
Thank you, Chuck.
And I'm not saying that it's gonna be perfect, but I, you know, it'll get a chance, the council to review it.
Certainly do our best.
But I certainly understand her, her time commitment and her time constraints.
Mr. President, I'm gonna support this motion to table, and part of the reason I'm gonna support it is because I I have serious reservations about no-bid, no-look contracts. I understand from time to time, town has to make decisions. Sometimes they go with the higher cost bidder, like we did just a moment ago with the radios, but we are in the third-largest media market, and I think we ought to be able to find a good public relations firm that can address the, the needs that we all recognize we have. Long overdue update to the website and other things. And I think we can do it in a way that we can justify to the town that we have done our job as far as the custodians of the, of the town checkroom sought out what is the best combination of price and quality, so I, I agree with what Councilman Gardner said.
All right, any other questions, comments? Ding, none. Please call the roll.
So the motion to table, Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens. To table. You are gonna go.
I don't have to.
Robert's rules, though, as I don't have to.
You don't have to.
No.
Okay, yes, so. It carries.
You're gonna pass?
Pass.
All right, that takes us up to item H, NIPSCO easements.
So there are three separate easements that NIPSCO is seeking from the town. Two of them are coming to you this evening, and the third one actually belong to the park board. They'll be considering it at their meeting tomorrow night. These run along the Pennsy Greenway behind Timmerett. There are already NIPSCO poles there. They are installing new, bigger poles that have to have a higher tension on them. They have different guy wire anchors that have to go in. And NIPSCO considers this a, a major improvement, and thus they want to, they want to change the easement to reflect that. It's standard easement documents. Our town attorney has had a chance to look them over. And they'll give us a thousand dollars for each of these.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve the easements for electric facilities numbered two-zero-zero-one-three-eight-dash-zero-zero-two-P E in exchange for one thousand dollars, and the easement for electrical, electric facilities dash-P E in exchange for one thousand dollars.
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further questions, comments? Ding, none. Please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. Do we have any reports tonight?
Mr. President, I do want to announce I have my councilman's night out event tomorrow, which is being co-hosted with the county library system at the Munster Library starting at six-thirty, and I invite all residents who are available to come to town.
All righty, anyone else have a report? Ding, none. We'll move on to portfolio reports. It's not a portfolio report, but we did have a nice session with the Chamber of Commerce. And last week, Thursday, they had a nice meal.
President, we had a very nice time. I want to express gratitude to the Chamber of Commerce for inviting us. Wendy, you did a great job as our emcee. Thank you. And I, I would welcome the opportunity to do it again.
Forward to next November, so we're already past the end.
Okay, I would support that. Counselor Gardner was there, myself, and the attendees were very astute, listened, and they didn't get up and leave right at one o'clock.
No, they didn't. They stuck around.
Well, yeah.
We, they were either enjoying the food or, or they were, were actually listening to us. I would think it's the food.
I, I think they serve dessert at one o'clock.
Yes, they do. And, and Ten Forty Catering, which is Hugo and Maria's new company, that did a phenomenal job, and I wish, I wish them all the best as they undertake the new catering services over at the Center for Legal and Performance Arts. I know it'll be a rousing success.
Great, great. Thank you. Announcements, all town council meetings will begin at seven PM unless otherwise noted. December second, twenty twenty-four will be the next regular town council meeting and redevelopment commission meeting. Looking for an adjournment.
So moved. I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned, and we'll have a short redevelopment commission. Meeting is adjourned and we'll have a short redevelopment commission meeting.
We got a plan here.
Oh.
We have some new business.
What?
Some new business on here.
All right, could I?
Yeah, and there's no annual meeting. I mean, that's that's gotta be, that's in the future.
No, I see. But this to me is going to be five minutes. I'll be happy to find. Because I could, I have yeah, that's fine too. I I'd be happy to explain. I just, it's going to take more than a minute.
Alrighty, we'll call the redevelopment commission regular meeting for uh November eighteenth to order.
Commissioner Shinkin.
Here.
Commissioner Hopper.
Here.
Commissioner Gardner.
Right.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Nellens.
President.
And our liaison to the school board, Mr. John Castro. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. President of the county.
Thank you. We do have an open to the public session here in the redevelopment commission. It has the same rules and limits as our main meeting. We have two minutes with a total of twenty for this section and it's all controlled by the regulations that are out. If there's anyone that would like to come forward, I will open the public session for the redevelopment commission. If anyone would like to come forward and speak on the redevelopment commission? Again, if anyone would like to come forward on the redevelopment commission, please do so. This is the time. Seeing no one, we'll close the open to the public. That takes us to the consent agenda.
I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Shinkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens.
Yes. There's no old business and there is new business. Wow.
Exciting. Um for the first year ever, the town is required or the redevelopment commission is required to prepare a spending plan for TIF funds for the coming year. This has to be done by December first. It's a new thing in the statute. Um there has been no set format given for what that needs to look like. Um the format that we're using here is a template that was created by Barnes Barnes and Warrenburg. Um and we outline everything that we know will be spending out of the TIF fund. Uh it reflects back directly on the budget that you adopted earlier this year. That includes the debt payments, those things for public safety. Um there's a that we, the commitment that is already made for Ridge Road and for the bus like train. Um if council decides or if the redevelopment commission decides that they would like to spend money on something else, we can amend the plan and resubmit it. Many times it's not true.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five annual spending plan that wants to redo. Monster redevelopment commission is presented.
We have support.
I second.
Okay, first vote. Any, any further questions, comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Shinkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens.
Yes. Any reports? Any announcements?
Just note that the annual meeting that's on the agenda will be um at the next, the December second redevelopment commission meeting.
Thank you. Alright. Seeing nothing else, I'll call for a German.
So moved. I'll second that motion.
Motion. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be a big big back and report. I'm excited. Yeah. We got paper, we got a piece of paper now.
Yeah.
They're pretty close.
Alright, thank you very much for being at the meetings tonight and we granted, well, thank you very much.